Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Josh Skowett.
Here.
Mozzarella.
Here.
Pari.
Yes.
Ready.
Present.
Snyder.
Here.
Willans.
Yes, sir.
Ira King.
Present.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Hawley, our board engineer, our board attorney, Mr. King.
Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and seen none. Ignore all the resolutions until you get to Alpha. Somebody move Alpha. This was a correction of a previous memorialization. Somebody like to move this one?
I moved up.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second one.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Here. Pari.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willans.
Yes.
Ira King.
Yes. Mr. O'Neill, just for organization purposes, which applications are yours?
The last three.
The last three.
Dusty.
When we get to those three, I'm going to ask you which is the easiest, which probably doesn't exist, but we will try. Okay? Good. Thank you. Let's call application 2175 Karen Yucanovich, 40 Summerfield Avenue. See variance to install an air conditioning unit. Please come forward.
Sir, could you state your name?
I'm Bob.
And?
On behalf of the owner.
Are you an attorney?
No. I'm a contractor.
Okay. And you have their consent?
Yeah, she's elderly woman.
Raise your right hand. You swear firm testimony about the board's truth self you got?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Share in the board's sworn.
Your last name again was?
Bob, the O C K.
Oh, very easy. Mr. Bob, have a seat. Make sure you speak into the microphone. I'm going to assume this is a de minimis request. Is this a corner?
No.
No, it's not.
This is it.
Oh, there it is, right there. Okay. And?
It's mounted.
Front yard.
It's mounted.
Okay. The only place it can go?
Yeah, yes.
That's it.
There's no legal. The inspector, you said we could put it in the attic, but that's not a possibility.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Nope.
And there is no air conditioning unit right now, right?
The unit has been installed.
Okay.
Previous to this variance.
Okay.
During the permanent process, they said we could install it for her during the summer. She had no air conditioning.
But it's not a replacement. This is a new?
A new install.
New one.
Okay.
Well, there wasn't one there before.
Correct.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given? I hear none and seen none. Any members of the public? You don't want to add anything else. You're good, right? You don't. That's it. I'm sorry. Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none and seen none. De minimis request, gentlemen and ladies.
Absolutely.
All right. Somebody frame a resolution so we can move on.
Application 21:75 Karen Yucanovich, 40 Summerfield Avenue, block 81, lot 9, zone R3, that we grant a sea variance to install an air conditioning unit contrary to section 430-35, columns 4 and 8.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora, please call the roll.
Josh Skowett.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Pari.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willans.
Yep.
Ira King.
Yes. That's it. We'll memorialize this. She'll get something in the mail. Thank you, Mr. Bob.
You're welcome.
It's called application 2167 Joe Datola, 8 Warsaw Court. See variance to install a stall, a swim spa, hot tub with stairs on a paper patio.
We both be providing testimony tonight. If you could both raise your right hands, you swear firm testimony about the board's truth self you got. And for the record, can you state your name, sir?
Joe Datola.
And ma'am?
Laura Datola.
And you're the owners of the subject property? All right, thank you. You're sworn. Have a seat. Share in the board's sworn.
Okay, so you have, this is an R3, and you only have 5,000 square. Is that 5,000 or 15,000?
15.
15,000. Okay, so you got a legal lot. It's a little scary there for a minute. I'm looking at Mr. Liza's report. The office has reviewed. They said upon inspection probably discovered that the paper patio was already fully constructed with a concrete pad installed in the location where the hot tub is proposed to go. Stormwater management measures are required for this property as the applicant is already over the max allowed for impervious coverage. And as proposing to increase the impervious coverage, the applicant is required to mitigate the storm runoff generated from the impervious area over 30%. The area of stormwater runoff to be mitigated is approximately 1,690 square feet, which might be accomplished by utilizing one or more of the various stormwater management measures. Mr., let's see here. Mr. Holloway, can you shed any light on this?
No, nothing has come up as per specifics. Just looking at the plan now.
What would the remediation?
Typically, it would have to be something that would have to go through a plot plan review with the town engineering department. And if it needs a dry well to keep the existing drainage the same as proposed drainage, that's typical, but testing the soil and putting in a dry well is required. I'm looking to see if there's an inlet.
Is there any issue in the area with your neighbors or with you with any flooding whatsoever? What about any runoff that goes to your neighbor's house?
No.
Never a problem?
No.
So it seems like there'd be no issue with the drainage based on what is being proposed.
Meaning that you don't understand why he's recommending additional? Or if they add the additional, it shouldn't be a problem?
It doesn't appear to be a problem.
I think he's just recommending if it is an issue that they'd have to remediate maybe during construction.
If it is an issue, and it doesn't appear to be, so. But if it is an issue, you obviously agree to. Yeah, what we're saying is that if your neighbors all of a sudden have drainage issues and they come to you, you may have to do some remediation.
Not at all.
Okay. I mean, I don't know the contour of your land, whether it drains away, down, up, toward the street, or whatever, but this is an issue that we have to deal with. Not unfortunately, but it's part of our. So the patio, everything is there except you haven't put the hot tub in? Is that?
No.
How about the stairs? They're in already?
It's going to come with the hot tub.
They're going to come with the hot? Oh, it's, okay.
They're removable.
Oh, remove. Okay, okay. And the 546 square foot paper patio is already there. How long has it been there?
Um, just summertime.
Okay. So you did all this patio? You did all this?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions by the board?
So you built patio, now you're going to put the hot tub in.
So it looks like I finally had a chance to. So the first one was just that the hot tub is going to go where it's already paved. The second item is basically saying to stay within the 30% permitted, you'd have to reduce it by the 1,600 square feet. So unless a variance is granted for that, there's no problems that have been recognized in the recent, if they're going to be responsible for, if anything comes up after it's installed. But it seems like it's already installed.
Okay.
And my only question is, so the pavers are down there already. Where's the additional impervious coverage that you're putting down? You currently have 37.63.
It's already in.
Uh huh.
Are these pavers that have spaces in between them?
Um.
Do they?
Yeah.
Are they like semi-pervious? Do you see some of the rainwater go through the things? Or does it all runoff?
It never has water on top.
Never has water on top, so you think it's, there is a degree of drainage there anyway. I don't know. I think we've approved 1,000 of these before, and this doesn't seem to be that much. Right, John?
And it'll be subject to the engineers. You'll comply with any recommendations from the town engineer, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? I hear none and seen none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none and seen none. Someone like to make a recommendation?
Yeah, I'm going to recommend, I'm going to be voting for it. It seems as though it's been done already, and you've had eight months or nine months already. Testimony has been that you haven't had any issues, and your neighbors have had no issues. And you're agreeing that if there, an issue does come up, you'll adhere to what the town engineer recommends. I will be voting for it.
Thank you, Mr. Josh Skowett. Someone frame a resolution so we can move on.
Application 21:67 Joe Datolo, 8 Worcester Court, block 400, lot number 3.13, zone R3, to issue or grant a sea variance to install a swimming spa, hot tub with stairs on a paper patio contrary to section 430-35, column 13, subject to recommendation from the engineering department if anything needed to be done, the storm work.
Second, Josh Skowett.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Just any, and they're responsible for all mitigation that may pop up beyond the engineer, like neighbors and everything else.
Yes.
If I have a problem with 41.
Yes. Was there a second to that motion?
Josh Skowett.
Any discussion? Nora, please call the roll.
Josh Skowett.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Pari.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willans.
Yes.
Ira King.
Yes. Results of variances granted, memorialize this at hopefully our next meeting, and then you'll be free to go ahead and get your permits and everything. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy your hot tub. Tell you, when you get those achy muscles and pains like my, at my age, it's the most wonderful thing.
Thank you very much.
55, yeah, yeah, I wish. Forgot the other leg. Alrighty, okay, next one is Reverum Meta Patty, 24 Raymond Boulevard. Application 2192. Good evening, sir.
Sir, raise your right hand. You swear firm testimony about the board's truth self you got?
Just to mention, I'm.
You're within the 200 feet.
I'm registered myself.
You can have a seat out in the audience.
You're the owner of 24 Raymond Boulevard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Have a seat. Share in the board's sworn.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Meta Patty, you're looking to put a 209 square foot sunroom addition on an existing open deck, okay? We probably approved you of the deck at one point. Yeah, those houses were all built on the entire building envelope, so whatever you put on there has to be approved, right, John?
Yep.
All right, so you're going from the existing rear yard of 29 to 18. That means the room's going to go out farther than the existing deck?
No, no.
No?
The deck extends to 16 feet.
Okay.
This one goes only to 11 feet.
After I said it, I understand. Minimal increase in building coverage, 2.48%.
Mr. Chairman, this is fairly similar to the previous application as far as adding additional impervious coverage.
Yeah.
And being responsible for just being, any problems with the neighbors or any drainage issue, it would be up to the advocates to square that away with the town engineer.
What's behind you?
There's a little bit of space and then other house.
Okay.
What 30 feet of it?
What's the current deck made of? Is it a wood deck? Is it a pavers?
It's, what's that?
Trex?
Trex, yeah.
Okay.
So you're not going to remove the deck? You're just going to do?
No, it's on top of the deck.
Yeah, I did it many years ago.
Yeah.
Worked that quite nicely. Okay, so de minimis, impervious coverage, building coverage, rear yard, we've already approved these things before. Any other questions?
Chairman, the rear yard, why it's less now? I mean, if it is on top of the deck, why the yard is 18?
Why does he have to?
They treat the deck differently in terms of setback than the building. The sunroom is part of the building. The deck, although it's construction, has a different setback.
Okay. The deck doesn't have a roof over it. You can look at it from that perspective.
All right.
I guess my other question would be if the deck has a roof, I mean, this new building has a roof on it, the water won't be intended, it won't be going through the trex where it goes now, it'll runoff to the side, so I guess like we said, they're going to have to keep an eye out for the water drain off.
You have to understand that if there's any drainage issues, you're going to be obligated by town to correct them. It may not happen. And you know, what you may look to do when you talk to your contractor, you might be able to drain and put a couple of dry wells in to prevent any possible. I mean, I did that with one of my, with my sump pump in my downspout. I used to have problems with the water getting back into the basement, and I just had my landscaper run a line for about 20 feet away from the house, and he dug a big dry well, and that was it. No problems anymore. It's just something to think about. You might want to talk to your contractor.
Right. Any issues?
Okay.
Do you have to add structural strength to the deck to support the addition?
I asked. The deck is only like eight years old, and I asked the sunroom guy who's going to come. He said, he looked under it, and he said it looks sturdy enough.
Interesting.
You might want to talk to an architect.
Trex really isn't structurally supporting.
Yeah, it's not a foundation.
The sunroom is just like four inch thick walls.
Yeah, I just be careful. You're building on trex. Trex isn't known for its structural.
Okay.
Two foot by two foot concrete. It was going down four feet with long arms. Architects. All right, any other questions? No? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given? I hear none and seen none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, no? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none and seen none. De minimis?
Very.
Very. Somebody frame a resolution?
Sure. Application 21:92 Ravaram Meta Patty, 24 Raymond Boulevard, block 734-05, lot 6, zone PRD-2, recommend granting a sea variance to construct a sunroom addition contrary to section 430-35, columns 7 and 10, with the applicant agreeing that if any issues come up, you would adhere to any adjustments you have to make with dry wells or et cetera.
Second, Casey. Any discussion? Nora, please call the roll.
Josh Skowett.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Pari.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willans.
Yes.
Ira King.
Yes. Results of variances granted, we'll memorialize this at your next meeting, and you'll be able to get your permits. Okay? Thank you. Good enjoy. What do you want to do first?
Well, in the first order of complexity, they're all easy, though, but.
Yeah, for a ducky. For a ducky first.
The mayo would be short.
The mayo, okay. Susan De Mayo.
Will both of you be providing testimony? Can you both raise your right hand? You swear firm testimony about the board's truth self you got? For the record, can you state and spell your name?
Anthony.
And sir? Anthony, you're sworn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we're just sworn.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. and Mrs. De Mayo, you are the owners of the property on Marcella Road, correct? And how long have you been in the house?
Since, uh, 34 years.
Would you please speak into the microphone?
You have to speak a little louder.
34 years in October.
John, you want to just sit, this is a, what you're trying to do is a D variance for?
Well, what we're going to do, and what I'm going to ask Mr. De Mayo next, is about a second kitchen that's been in the house. How long has that second kitchen been in the house?
Roughly 32 years.
32 years. And this is to legalize that second kitchen, which has been there all this time. And basically formalize the mother-daughter setup that exists in the premises right now. Mrs. De Mayo, your daughter is living with you, in fact?
Yes, daughter and my son.
Oh, both, okay. And how did this? Mother-daughter or two-family dwelling? I don't understand. This is two-family dwelling. It's a mother, mother-daughter, but I noticed for the two-family because, of course, the premises being with a kitchen, just legalizing the second kitchen, but it is a single-family home. And all you want to do is legalize the second kitchen? That's it. The last time I had one of these, I mentioned the word Italian, and I got accused of being racist, okay? First of all, I am Italian, and I understand a second kitchen in a home. Many, many of my friends and neighbors back in Belleville had second kitchens, so. What?
In the basement.
In the basement. Right. Go ahead. So this is that same type of setup? How did this application come about? You were remodeling a bathroom?
We're looking to do a renovation on the upper, the second floor of the house, and it was just basically bumping the rooms out, and we wanted to add a master bathroom into our bedroom. And when we submitted the plans, it came back, we couldn't do it because of the kitchen, the second kitchen.
Mr. Chairman, this is normally, it's called by MLUL these days, a multi-generational.
Yes.
So is there any expectation that ever in the future that would be reduced back to a one-family? Is that?
Removing the kitchen.
Is it really multi-generational, or is it a two-family dwelling that you're pursuing?
It's, we're looking for the multi-generational setup. My next witness, Mr. Haynes, is going to show you the floor plan and show you, this is truly a single-family home. There's no division between the rooms or the floors that would provide for a two-family home.
Is there a separate entrance?
No, it's just the one entrance. Could you explain that a little better? I think you. Well, maybe I'm going to get Mr. Haynes. Yeah, let's do that. Let's hear from somebody who's going to describe the floor plan. Yes, so Mr. Haynes. I have no further questions for these. Thank you.
In my judgment, that's the key to this, if the house is set up so that all the occupants intermingle, then it's that multi-generational.
I have no, I have no problems with a second kitchen as long as it's never been.
So how do you prevent that in the future from the upcoming?
You're going to hear from the architect.
We're going to show you.
In order to get in and out of this house.
One step ahead, sir.
Everybody's going to be.
Using same door?
Using the same door, yeah.
So you raise your right hand? You swear firm testimony about the board's truth self you got?
I do.
For the record, can you state and spell your name?
My name is Joseph Haynes.
Yeah. Me too.
You're a licensed architect?
License.
All your licenses are in full force, and in fact, you didn't qualify before either this board or other boards. This is.
First on the board and many other boards.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn as an architect, as an expert.
Thank you. So Mr. Haynes, you've heard me promise you're going to show them this is a single-family home. Why don't you go ahead? Referring to the plans you provided? These are the plans that were provided, so we don't have to mark them? Or you want to mark them?
Yes. The plans that were provided are drawings A1, A2, I think it's A3, A4, A5. I have A1, A2, and A3.
Okay.
So back in, I think around June of 2020, I was hired by De Mayo's to, their main focus was all work on the second floor. It was in order to really create a master bedroom suite on their first floor.
What style house is this?
It's like, you call it a raised ranch.
Raised ranch, similar to a bi-level type?
Similar to a bi-level, where you're entering in the middle of the home. I can show you an elevation.
Yeah. Everybody understand a bi-level or a raised ranch? Bi-level, you usually go up to the stairs, and raised ranch, I think you enter from the ground.
These are my proposed elevations. I do have existing, if you want to see them. These are my proposed elevations. So a raised ranch, the entrance in this home is in the middle.
Mm-hmm.
And it's half a flight up, so you go up a half a flight up, and you're able to go up to the first floor or down to the ground level.
Is this A3?
This is A3, correct.
A3.
Can you see it? Can you see it? I'm sorry. Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's fine. I have no problem.
Not to confuse things, it might be a good idea. I have exhibit, I have an existing condition plan, which could be an exhibit, if you want me to show that, make an exhibit. EX1, it's not part of submissions. It'll just show how the house exists today.
Mark, that would be good.
Okay. On our existing plan, we call it ground floor and, and second floor, but really it's the first floor when you walk up. So, if you came in the front door of the house, you were, it's an open staircase that goes upstairs and downstairs, there's no separation at the top of the stairs, there's no door at the top of the stairs, there's no door at the bottom of the stairs. If you came to the top of the stairs, there's an existing living room to your left-hand side that has a, as a, the wall was opened up to the dining room and kitchen and there's a back, I called it a bedroom, there's not even a closet in there. Uh, they actually, they had, added as a dog room when I went there first time. Uh, if you came up the stairs and you went to your right, there's a ba, a full bathroom and there's three bedrooms. One that uses as an office and then two bedrooms.
So is there any secondary entrance that can be used as establishing a apartment in this building?
Not, not up to the first floor. The only entrance up to the first floor is through the front door and up the set of stairs. Uh, on the, on the backside, is, uh, right now it doesn't even exist any back exit to the rear yard from that level.
Is it a walkout basement kind of thing?
There's no basement.
Uh, the ground level is like, is like a, is, is like a walk-up basement, it's a slab-on-grade. So it's a two-story house where the first floor is a slab-on-grade, this, the, the first floor, that's what we call the ground level, and then the first floor is above that.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Wait, I want to hear what that, what the one.
I got, I got to show down the, down on the first floor. On the ground floor. Okay, on the gra, on the ground floor, as you come down the stairs, uh, again, there's no door at the bottom of those stairs when you come down, so there's no separation, there's no fire-rated door, there's no fire separation between the two floors. And you're able to go to your left, and again, there's another living room there and there's a set of doors that went out into a dining room and, and their, and their summer kitchen, sunroom. And actually, there is no way to get, currently out the back of that to the rear yard either.
Did you say the other one's a bedroom or a sitting room?
Uh, this is like a little dining area.
Oh, okay.
And a ki, and the kitchen areas are here.
Got you, okay.
This is, this is actually, this, this part of the, of the ground level actually sticks out of the back of the house, so upstairs.
Mm-hmm.
Currently, it ends across here and then this one little bump out is over the top of where that dining room is. And then if you come down the stairs to the right, there's a bedroom, there's a bathroom that goes through this space here, uh, a laundry room, and then it was a garage, it's now like half a garage, like a storage garage.
Okay. So there's no gar, no parking in the, no garage?
No, no parking in there, no parking in there.
So, I don't know if I heard you from jumping the gun, but entrances and exits, how many?
But the only other, uh, currently, as it exists today.
Yeah.
The only way out to the backyard is a, is a back door through the laundry room.
Okay.
Back here.
Which is on the ground floor?
Which is on the ground floor, on the, at the back of the house.
Okay, and the other entrance is the main entrance?
Is the main entrance.
Going forward, is that case the same?
So, going forward, I tried to make a little more for today's lifestyle.
Okay.
Uh, majority of the work is upstairs. So, upstairs, uh, we created a new back entrance with a deck going out the back, with a flight of stairs going down to the rear yard, so not.
Getting rid of the first rear entrance?
Uh, we're up in a, we're up on the, on the upper level right now.
So we?
So there was no, there was no exit. Yes, we created a back patio door.
Okay, so now there's a third place to get out of the house?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Up at the first floor level.
Okay.
It's, I was drawing A2 floor plans, what I call the second floor in here. Uh, we expanded the kitchen, kitchen used to be here, we pushed the bathroom over, pulled the kitchen to the backside of the house, made a larger kitchen with a, with a sliding door going out to a deck in the rear of the house, so you could access the backyard through a deck down a flight of stairs.
Okay.
And, uh, that's the only, uh, exit we made on that level.
Okay.
Besides, the other changes we've made on that is that we pushed the, the primary bedroom to the rear yard, made an addition out the back, over the top of that one story we discussed before, which was that kitchen area in the back. And we made, we didn't, made a new master bathroom, a new primary bathroom.
So just please, if you didn't, show me the two kitchens?
Okay. What we're proposing to do or an existing?
Proposing.
Proposing, okay. So, on the upper level.
Mm-hmm.
The kitchen, the kitchen. The ki, yeah, the kitchen will be here in the, in the rear of the house with a sliding door.
Okay.
Going out to the rear.
Understood.
Okay?
Yeah.
The kitchen that exists down on, on the ground level is right here. And we, we introduce a slider here that goes under the deck to go out to the back, so I introduce another slide or patio door to go out to the backyard at this level.
So, my concern is that these people have, could have a totally legitimate reason for having a second kitchen, and I have no problem with that. My concern is that one day when they sell it, some family comes in and says, well, that is a great idea, we could have multiple families in here. How do we prevent that?
Well, I guess, I guess.
Deed restriction.
Before we go there, when I like.
Deed restriction, right, Joe?
That's what we've done before.
Right. Can't make a two-family house, I've got a deed restriction.
Well, you can't make it a two-family house because you would need to modify the house.
And you would need a variance to do it.
Right, so why do you need a deed restriction? Why do you need the cloud?
Because people can, people can just enter from the back, it could be arrangement.
But what was important, what's important to note is that both kitchens do exist and the basement kitchen, uh, you, you could ask my clients, they got a permit 30 years ago.
And I'm not questioning any of that, but I know in my time, my short time on the board, um, we're, we've been very attuned to making sure no two-family homes, and my recollection, the only time we ever approved a second kitchen was a person with a handicapped child who they were trying to assimilate and do the best they could, and they had a second kitchen for them. So, my concern is real that I don't want to make it where it could be a two-family house by slapping on the door.
I, I understand that, but I was, what I'm trying to stress the point is that there is two kitchens in this house. Before I started the work and I have been there and I grandfathered in, we're just moving one and ex, and expanding it, but there are two kitchens in this house that they.
That doesn't mean that we have to grant what you're requesting.
Yeah, and, uh, even if there are two kitchens existing right now, the extra exits you are adding, that doesn't exist now.
Correct.
Correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Do you need to step off the back deck? That goes down to. Is this a bit required?
In the old days, every house was built, there was no back door, there was always a front door, maybe sometimes a side door, you never got access. In today's living, everyone wants to access their backyards and use their backyards. So, almost every design I do has decks, have stairs that get down, because if you're, if you're in the kitchen, if you're on that deck and you wanted to go in the backyard, you would have to walk through the house, down these stairs, across, and then back out. It would be a hike if you were on that back deck.
Mr. Haynes, can I ask you a question? If you took the kitchen out, okay, and everything went ahead and everything was done and all was built, and you got all your permits and you got all your inspections and everything was done, and the homeowner decided to put the kitchen back in, who would know? Nobody, right? Nobody would know.
Correct, correct.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is a situation that's existed there for over 30 years.
I understand that, I understand that.
It's a true, it is a true multi-generational living structure. But if it would satisfy some of the concerns of the board, my client is willing to remove the stairs from the upper level deck so that there's no direct access to the, uh.
I would hate to see them do that.
Well, what if, what about if you just didn't put the extra door on the ground floor there? You had an extra, you're adding an extra door that goes out onto the deck stairs, correct?
Co, correct.
So if you took that door out, just put a wall up, that's one less.
I'm adding a, there is one door that exists over here anyway.
Right, so you'd still have one, two, three. You'd have three instead of four.
Correct.
I mean, I don't know.
My, my, I don't have a problem with the D'Mayos' use of this and it was a two-family. But we're, I think my concern is moving forward. So, what would be the problem approving this plan, because it looks like a nice plan, a better utilization of the property and everything else, with a deed restriction for going forward? The D'Mayos can enjoy their house the way it is? And I, I don't see why that's, uh, be it at all objectionable. That just means they can't ever sell it as a.
Where they have to take it out?
Yeah, because we, we know from, from.
Yeah, okay, but, but it's not used, that we're concerned about.
We know firsthand about houses that were in this town that were two families, were never, that were never approved, and then subsequently they come to get approval and we've turned them down. So I think a deed restriction is in, is in, uh. I'm not a lawyer, you're the lawyer, tell me.
Yes, we've done this before and, and you can do that, it's not an issue.
We have a standardized form that was developed about 10 years ago because we had a rash of these things, the mother-in-law apartment.
Yes, it's really dropped off. We used to have a lot, lot more, a lot, lot.
I'd just like to make a statement here that.
Could move along, if the D'Mayos are willing to do the deed restriction thing, I think the plan looks very nice for them to enjoy the home more with their family, and, uh, I would be, uh, supporting that with a deed restriction and recommending we approve the application.
You know, in this day and age, an, an extended family, you have multi-generate, I think multi-generation families are more common than uncommon from what, I mean, my, in my accounting practice, when I have people come and I'm doing their taxes and they tell me that their son and daughter and, uh, their son and daughter-in-law and three kids are living with them, you know, it's very, I think it's more common than uncommon. So, uh, and I think this house would be tough to make a two-family house out of. You'd have to do a lot of modifications to make that really a.
I don't think so.
Well, you, you only got one heating, only got one heating.
If we do the deed restriction, we don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
We can't, we can't police everything going forward either.
Absolutely right. But with the housing department, how many houses are there ready? Single rooms each in.
That's why we have a housing department and that's why they should be clamping down on these people.
So putting a, and putting a deed restriction will help housing department to, you know, if they ever come across this.
Everything, everything good with that? You got any more witnesses?
No more witnesses, and after consultation with my clients, they are willing to accept the condition of the deed restriction.
Thank you.
We will work through the language with, uh, Calister.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? No, we're good. Any members of the public have any questions? Witness on a testimony given, of any of the witnesses given this evening? I hear none and seen none. Mr. O'Neil, you don't need to sum, do you? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and seen none. Some of them, some of them make a statement as to what we're doing here.
I think I made it, but I'll recreate it again. I think, uh, the plan looks, uh, uh, well-placed and that the family enjoy the property and the home more fully, uh, and with the restriction of the deed for future use, uh, I will be supporting this application.
And it's for, again, not a two-family home, but a multi-generational.
Right.
And that application was amended as so.
Is there a second?
Josh Kowalski.
Any discussion? Nora, please call the wall. Roll.
Josh Kowalski.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Tariq.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willen.
Yes.
Hurricane.
Yes. Salts as a variance is granted.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Which one's next?
I want to ask Mr. Casawala.
Casawala?
2188.
Casawala. Paper, paper, paper.
So will you raise your right hand? Who you, do you swear a firm testimony about to give before the board, or something you got?
Yes.
For the record, can you state and spell your name?
Nakul Casawala, N-A-K-U-L, last name Casawala, K-A-F-K-D-W-A-L.
And you're the owner of this subject property?
He's a contract purchaser.
Contract purchaser, then you have the, uh, right to, uh, make this application for the owner. All right, you're sworn, uh, Chairman, you, what is this warrant?
And Casawala, you are the, as I mentioned, the contract purchaser. You are proposing to put a single-family home on this currently vacant lot there on Halsey Road, remember?
Yes, that's true.
Uh, I guess you designed this in accordance with the neighborhood condition and.
Yes, very much.
There is some information, we might as well just get right to it in one of the reports discussing, uh, whether or not you would be willing to put a sidewalk at this part of this application. You are willing to do that.
Right, our touch on the Halsey Road, on the Ludlow Road, there is already a sidewalk and, uh, it's about the putting the sidewalk on the Halsey Road.
So, this is an investment for you?
Yes.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Any questions?
Was there a house before here? It's just, always, always, right?
Are you going to live in the house or are you going to be building a two-cell?
I'm willing to sub.
Building a cell?
You have any other witnesses?
Any questions, my members of the public? Next witness.
So will you raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about to give before the board, or something you got? For the record, can you state and spell your name?
Frank Matarazzo, M-A-T-A-R-A-Z-Z-O.
And your testimony to be, uh, engineer?
Yes.
And your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes.
You've been qualified for this board and other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Please move your force, please.
Mr. Chairman, now the witness is sworn and qualified.
Mr. Matarazzo, will you please describe for us the, uh, application, I see colorized on the plan, so let's mark that as A1 for this evening?
Okay, uh, the drawing you see there is entitled, uh, Board of Adjustment Map, Halsey Road and Ludlow Road. Uh, it's the colorized version of the drawing that the board has. It's a kind of board adjustment map. It's on the east-southeast corner of Halsey Road and Ludlow Road, currently a vacant lot, um, located in the B4 zoning district. Uh, the lot is vacant, there's more than lawn area with some trees along the perimeter, and what we're proposing is.
Do you please use the mic remote?
Yeah, you got to pick in the mic a little bit. This mic, this is on the work.
Uh, we're proposing to construct a single-family dwelling which will front on Ludlow, uh, with the side entrance garage, uh, accessing Halsey Road. We are maintaining a 25 and a half foot front yard setback on Ludlow Road, uh, and also a 25 and a half foot setback off of Halsey Road.
So, uh, what are our variances here for this?
Uh, the variance is, one is the use for a, a single-family dwelling in the B4 zone, and the only two variances we have are the front yards. Uh, 25 and a half feet, uh, front yard setback on Halsey Road and Ludlow Road where 35 feet is, uh, required.
Now, the idea here is you're trying to maintain a buffer from the surrounding residential uses on Lot 2 and Lot 9?
Yes.
Uh, what about the trees? Are you going to be removing any trees?
Um, there are some trees, uh, that will be removed. They are actually, uh, in the vicinity of the house on the, let's say, southerly corner of the proposed house. Uh, there's about two or three trees there that will need to be removed.
Uh, the house orientation is how?
Uh, the front of the house will be facing Ludlow.
Can you describe the, uh, stormwater management on the side?
Sure. Uh, we're proposing a dry well, uh, which will be located, uh, in the southerly corner of the property, which is, uh, closest to Ludlow. That will, uh, capture the roof leaders for the proposed house.
I have no further questions for. Lot 2 and 9 are currently, uh, residential houses?
Yes.
I have a question for you. Have you received the engineer's report?
Yes.
And you have any questions on? Or would you like to go to those?
Well, uh, one of the comments was to have the overflow from the dry well timed to the catch base of this right there.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be our intention, we're in time.
And there were, there were five comments in the, uh, recommendation letter.
You'll comply with those?
Uh, there was a question whether or not the, uh, the house needs to be where it was versus moved over a little bit to, uh, comply with the, all right, just move the driveway away from the, uh, the corner lot, of the corner of the streets.
I know what you're talking about this?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we'll mark, you've, uh, done a vicinity map of the immediate area of this, Mr. Matarazzo?
Yes.
We're going to mark that as A2 for this evening?
Comment number one on, uh, on your letter, uh, pertains to the width of the driveway where we have 32 and a half feet, uh, but only a 24-foot wide, uh, driveway width is permitted. Uh, that's one of the variances that we're seeking. Uh, we actually want to have, uh, room to park an extra car on the side.
Could you just speak a little louder?
Yeah, you're kind of sure. Was to park an extra car on the side of the garage. So in other words, you have a two-car garage and you could park another vehicle in the driveway without blocking someone coming out of the garage. Um, but if we could reduce the curb cut to the 24 feet, but just leave the driveway width at the 32 and a half.
How does that, I'm on the fence about that one, just personally, when I'm back and I have a parking space, I hate to do that S maneuver to hit the, the exit driveway. What does the board feel about that?
I would agree.
Yep, me too.
The question, why, why, why have the access onto Halsey Road, which is a much busier road than Ludlow, I would think, right?
It's on Ludlow.
No, that's what I'm saying, why have it exit onto Halsey instead of Ludlow? To me, that'd be a lot safer for, um.
Well, actually, the, the reason why was because we have a, a larger depth. For instance, the, the width of the property, hold on.
I think the reason why you want to face the house to Ludlow instead of Halsey.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's, that's the simple way.
Okay, because we have a hundred-foot lot depth coming, uh, from Ludlow back and we have 89 feet going from Halsey back, so we get about 10, 11-foot deeper backyard, uh, feet going from Halsey back, so we get about 10, 11-foot deeper backyard if we orient the house facing Ludlow.
Okay, the house facing Ludlow is not a problem, but why not take the driveway, the way it's proposed right now, turn it to the side, and have it go out to Ludlow instead of off of Halsey? And that way, you can move the house even a little bit off the property line.
You mean to have a front entrance garage off of Ludlow?
And I'll turn it to that, just to flip the garage.
Yeah, that's what it is.
And move the house.
Yeah. And then you can give more room on the side of the house there as well.
Exactly.
And then give your, there's a house to that opposite side there?
Yeah.
So, you need to give the neighbor a little, you know, hopefully on top of the neighbor either.
All you gotta do is mirror it.
Yeah.
And it's still facing what you want to do.
Our driveway's here now.
Slide the house down, you turn the driveway to the side, and we're good.
So, basically, the house stays as is except, you know, you have to make adjustments for the garage and the driveway that comes on a lot, correct?
Right. So, the driveway will still require the variance of the 25-foot setback, is that correct?
Yeah, we talked about the driveway width.
The driveway width?
Yeah.
Very good.
This is not also- Let me see if I understand this. The house currently is going to be placed in the lot, and the 326 is closest to the side yard where it says 326, right? We're gonna, we're gonna shift that, that part of the house down, and put the garage on the other side, and run the driveway off of Ludlow. Is that correct? Yes. Sounds like a plan. I like that.
And how wide will be the driveway?
24 feet.
24.
Davey, is Halsey that much busier than Ludlow?
Yeah.
Is it really? Oh, yeah. What the fuck?
Are we talking about moving the house two off the side, or?
Just flip it.
So that the house would be where the garage is, the garage would be the house.
Oh, okay, okay. Gotcha.
And then the driver would-
Yeah, I don't think they're, I don't think they're looking at it that way. I think they're just talking about turning the garage.
Oh, turning the garage around and just having the driveway off of Ludlow? You could do that too?
Yeah.
That wouldn't be, that would be easier.
But I would say-
Just put the driveway like this.
Yeah.
That's all you gotta do.
If you do it that way, you can come off the side.
Right, Joe?
The side yard.
Just put the driveway like this, come in here off of Ludlow, leave the building exactly as it is? You like that? Everybody like that?
So, in other words, put a front entrance garage on Ludlow, same layout?
Yeah, exactly the same.
Are you going to move the house towards Halsey too, because it gets more-
Slide it over a bit.
Because it-
No, right now, the house is in line with the, with the-
But it's 25.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't move it.
Everybody else holds with Halsey.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't move it.
I was just talking from the side yard with the lot number nine behind it, right, Lot 9?
Yeah. No, because you don't want, you want the, you want the house to be even with the house next door on Lot 2, which is 25 feet from the property line. Yeah, but that's the front property line on Halsey. Still, architecturally and artistically, the houses will be in line this way. Otherwise, if you move it, this house is gonna be out of line with the house next door. That's exactly, but the point being- Architectural 101. Okay. To strengthen the point, the house on Lot 2 is 25 feet from Halsey Road. Yes. If this house is moved to be 25 feet from Halsey Road, okay? It'll align perfectly with that other building.
So, Mr. Chairman, after consultation with my clients, we have decided to reorient the garage, but we are reading the house and its orientation as it is.
The house is gonna stay where it is.
Yes, garage.
Garage, it's just, all you're gonna do is flip the driveway. I have no problem, I have no problem with that, I don't bother to ask.
So, if you, if you flip the garage, right, I don't know if it's a perfect square or not, if it is and it's a moot point, but if you flip the garage, you'll have more than 25-foot setback if it's not as deep as it is wide.
You're not flipping the garage, oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
So, and then you could move a little bit to keep the 25-foot offset. Like, the end of the garage would be the 25-foot, is all, I think that's what Davey was kinda getting at.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, but yes, I might get it.
Yeah, actually, our 25 and 1/2-foot setback that we're proposing off of Ludlow is to the enclosed porch of the house.
Yeah, the chairman was talking about from Halsey, though, the 25 off Halsey, 25 off Ludlow. When you orient it, if you just put the end of the garage at the 25-foot setback, then it's still in line with the houses on Lot 2. That's okay. And it would give you more room on the side, I would assume.
And it's even in line with the two houses on the other side here, so I would not, I would not touch this. This is gonna be artist, architecturally, you know, it's gonna have a good line.
What is the board's decision on the driveway width?
I think we just do a normal driveway width, I don't think we need an extra space. You got, is it a two-car garage?
It's a two-car garage.
You got two cars in the garage, two cars in the driveway, that's four cars off the street. I don't think you need any more driveway. You don't need any more impervious coverage. Am I wrong? Am I wrong, right?
No.
Everybody agrees?
No variants for the driveway.
No 32-foot garage.
24-foot wide driveway is gonna be 23. Pretty close, yeah. That's right. The anomaly is 24?
Okay, can we have a recap from my, okay, so, the variances we're now going to be granting are, okay?
Use.
Use is number one, I think that's not a big issue, 'cause it's all residential in here.
Two front yards.
And two front yards, okay? So, that, I think somewhat mitigated by the agreement to change the location of the driveway to Ludlow, and that would be oriented with the other properties in the area, so, okay, good.
Okay, if we could finish up just the rest of the engineering items, just touch base. So, a few comments. You already talked about the tree to be removed, so I already think you've covered that one for three. Number four, I just wanted you to acknowledge that you're gonna need some soil analysis, a dry well, coordinate the things with the plot plan with the county of Engineering Department.
Yes.
You gonna do some plantings?
There is significant plantings on the site, Mr. McDonough covered that.
Oh, okay, fine.
No further questions.
Any other questions of this witness? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on a testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. Next witness.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough.
Do you have to revise the plan and submit to the board, or?
No, he'll, we'll have it right now.
They have a compliance process.
Raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about to give it to the board, so you got.
I do.
State your name, please.
Sure, I'm John McDonough, M-C-D-O-N-O-G-H.
And you're a testimony to be planning?
Yes.
And your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes.
You've been qualified for this board and other boards of the state of New Jersey?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, you're qualified.
Since two weeks ago?
Well, remind me a few weeks ago.
So, Mr. McDonough, what do you think of the sentence?
This application is a good fit for the site, we've given the board an exhibit, a four-page exhibit. Do we need to mark it, Joe?
There you go.
A4 for the record, I think that's more appropriate.
Yes.
So, A4 is going to be a four-part exhibit, which shows an aerial photograph, two aerial photographs to show the condition of the property, which is a vacant corner lot on the corner of Ludlow and Halsey, right there in this pocket B4 zone, which we know is a business zone. You can see this lot sort of stands out in contrast to the lots around it. It's been in this vacant condition for 80 years. And you want to, if you go back in the aerial photograph, you see this area started to populate back in the 1930s and 1940s, to the development that you see today that has a very strong residential character and pattern to it. We did a search of the 200-foot ring around the property, we found that there's 32 lots, 27 of them are actually one-family dwellings, which is exactly what our applicant is doing here, so our applicant is making a proposal for something that is compliant or compatible with 84% of the lots within the 200-foot ring around the site. Not only is there compatibility with the established neighborhood pattern, there's also compatibility with your master plan, which recognizes the B4 zone as distinct, and that it does have, I'll say, pockets of residential uses clustered within it. The B4 zone is a relatively unique zone here in the community, there's only two B4 zones throughout Parsippany, sort of structured as these neighborhood commercial uses, but they have, again, been populated with residential uses as well. So, the primary relief here is a D1 use variance to allow a one-family dwelling in the B4 zone, which is more in harmony with the neighboring uses. We have that setback relief for the front, 25.5 versus 35. I think I just sort of eliminated driveway, the driveway relief is gone. So, again, it's just the setback, and it's the use. In terms of the justification for the use, the use running it through the four parts of the NADICH test, first, site suitability. Contextually, if we just gave you the reasons why the neighboring land uses are all residential, condition-wise, you can see it in the photograph, it's predominantly cleared, it's flat, it's ideally suited for a single-family home. It kinda makes you scratch your head why it never got developed in the first place, but there it is, sitting there. Likewise, this site is on the edge of a zone where the use would be permitted. This is right next to the R4 zone, actually got that Supreme Court case out there, the NADICH case, which says, being located on the edge of the zone where the use is permitted could be a reason of site suitability, so we'll turn to that as well. In terms of special reasons, this is gonna deliver new housing stock. It's a beautiful building that our applicant is proposing here, so it certainly will add value, quality to the area. It's going to promote efficient land use, variety of land uses, that goes towards purposes A, G, I, and M of the statute with respect to the negative criteria, the public impacts. I'll fall back on the testimony before me. The building is designed to meet all applicable codes, these are going to be comfortable, livable units. The site with the input of the board, I think, clearly is designed to function safely and efficiently. And then, again, we have good compatibility with the master plan, which actually recommends now one-family dwellings as a potential land use included within the B4 zone. So, again, this is one of those applications that is consistent with, substantially consistent with all of those problems of the NADICH test. And then finally, the C relief related to moving the building a little bit closer to Ludlow. The beneficiary of that would be the neighboring land use to the back, it moves the building further away. We've got a good arrangement here where we have a backyard up against that adjacent residential use, so we fold this all in as a better zoning alternative, which is that C2 balancing test with benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriment. With that, I think the applicant has certainly met its burden here. I think the board did what it does, which is make a good application even better, and with that, I will say that the statutory test is met, and approval is awarded.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough, I have no further questions for this witness.
Any questions for Mr. McDonough?
No.
No?
Just one sight on your photographs, that looks like a big power pole and electrical units right on the corner there of this lot, Ludlow and Halsey. That's not an issue of any kind?
I'll leave that to our engineer, but the fact that there's a power line on the corner, I don't think here's the-
The driveway or anything, you know?
No. Well, I'm not sure of the driveway, though, no.
Because if you see on the other corner, there's not a pole, but the wires are right there.
Good job, Mr. McDonough.
Thank you, come back.
Any questions of this witness by members of the public? I hear none and see none. Any other witnesses, Mr. McDonough? I was gonna call you Mr. Mc. Jeez.
Okay, no further questions.
Any summation, or you just wanna go on the merits of the witnesses?
We'll rely on the testimony.
Any members of the public who are speaking opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. It's a use variance, ladies and gentlemen, do we need to go into conference, or has Mr. McDonough convinced us all that this B4 zone residential is not a problem?
He was so persuasive.
So, someone make a recommendation to that effect?
Yeah, I'll do it, I guess. I think it was a real strong case, I think it was also a layup, and I was thinking myself also, why didn't anybody buy that? 'Cause it seems like it's perfect for the use, good luck, and I'll be voting for it.
Someone frame a resolution quickly?
Application 21 colon 88, Nakul Katsadwala, Halsey Road, Block 326, Lot 2, Zone B-4 to issue or grant a D variance to construct a new single-family dwelling as per the discussions and the testimony.
Second, Josh was-
Any discussion, Nora Calderon?
Mr. Toscaway?
Yes.
And Icarilla?
Yes.
And Free?
Yes.
And Mr. Ready?
Yes.
And Snyder?
Yes.
And Willans?
Yes.
Yes, results of variances granted.
Thank you, everyone.
Shouldn't be any issues with the resolution, right? We don't need to. Everything's clear. Okay, good, thank you. All right, you ready for the next one? Do we, we don't need a break, do we need a break?
Nope.
How long are we going here?
Application 21 101, Matthew and Swanee Delaquila, seeking a D variance to convert a first-floor office to a second, separate residential unit.
Sir, did you raise your right hand?
Yeah.
Who's first? You swear a firm testimony about to give it to the board, so you got it? Yes. For the record, can you state, spell your name?
Sure, Matthew, M-A-T-T-H-E-W, Delaquila, D-E-L-L-A-Q-U-I-L-A.
And you're the owner of the subject property?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Delaquila, who is the owner of the property identified there on Littleton Road, is proposing taking what was granted a variance 20 years ago for home office to be occupied by a non-resident. We are now proposing turning that into another residential unit, creating a two-family. So, I will introduce Mr. Delaquila, who will describe for you what it is he is proposing.
Well, after hearing-
Delaquila, can you tell us a little bit about yourself first?
Sure, I'm the owner of 1035 Littleton Road, so I work in construction. We purchased the property last summer, myself and my wife.
And what are you proposing with that?
What I'm proposing is the house is located on Littleton Road directly across from St. Christopher's Church. It's been well taken care of, it was built in 1822. What I'm proposing is the variance that was granted in 2002 allowed the first floor to be used as a, as a business, as was mentioned, so there are two separate HVAC units, one for each floor, the electrical panels are one for each floor, two separate water service connections, one for each floor. I'm not proposing in making any changes to the outside, in fact, we really appreciate, we really like this home, however, it is already separated into two units in many ways, so my request is to use the first floor as residential instead of business use.
This is gonna require some modification by yourself?
There'd be two modifications that are needed, one would be, and I have pictures, and I have a plan.
You already showed the pictures.
Sure.
We'll mark this as A1, these are photos taken by yourself.
Yes.
Mr. Delaquila, do you live in this house?
We did, temporarily, we moved in with my sister for a few months, but today, we do not.
Do you plan on living in one of these apartments?
We would, yes.
You would, or you will?
In the summer. We will in the summer. I relocated down south for secular work reasons, we're living with my sister, and currently, there is someone living in the house, not us, so the idea is, this, the renter is living on the second floor, there is nowhere for me to move into right now. If the first floor was available, I could move into the first floor, but right now, I can't.
So, you're planning on, right now, that you're gonna live in it part-time and rent the other unit?
I don't know about part-time, probably full-time, we would live there, yes.
Okay.
My intention was not to move away, I had to move away for family reasons and work reasons, and that's why I'm in Georgia temporarily. So, it wasn't to buy this property and move away, if that answers the question.
Pretty impressive. Give him a minute, sir.
But you said you're gonna be there in the summers?
Right.
This summer.
Okay, so, after this summer, you plan on living there full-time?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I guess-
I can explain it, if you, oh, I'm sorry.
You were going to explain what modifications have to be done to the first floor? And some, and then we got off track somehow. So, what modifications have to be done to the first floor?
To the first floor, can I just put this up? Actually, in the package that you have, here, let's... Sure, if you want to open with it.
Is this in our package?
Yes, you have a...
Okay.
Just handed out.
Oh, it's in the back of these...
The 11-by-17 that you have in the package, I think, shows the first floor, I believe.
Handout, just handout.
In the handout, yes.
Okay, got it.
Up here, I have three drawings. One is the existing first floor, that's what this is. So this is how it currently is set up. So it shows...
Was that in the package?
This was not, this one.
So we're gonna mark that as A2.
So this we don't have?
No, we don't have it.
Correct. This is the existing first floor. I only printed one copy here. Because it's not the modifications, it's just the existing. I should have printed another one. And what it shows, this is what is existing, which it's... Here's the entry to the house. This large room was used as an office. This was used as a reception area, another office, a printer area, and a conference room. So that's currently how it was used by the previous owner of the house.
So that... Was that owner of this house was living upstairs and the office was downstairs?
His mother was living upstairs, yes.
So there is a family member living upstairs. No, no, we gave him a variance for a separate... But I believe... Probably for the family office. Yes. There's been a couple of occasions where we have granted variances, where we had home offices, but we allowed the... Because of changing conditions and home offices not necessarily... Whatever. Another example was Dr. Lorenzo on Bevelwick Road.
Right, yeah.
We gave him, if I remember correctly... He moved out of the house, but he continued the office. And we let him rent the house to someone else, which was not permitted. But it was extenuating circumstances because he didn't want his kids growing up on Bevelwick Road, the whole story. But the office stayed. It was not a two-family. The office stayed, but then he moved back, and then he wanted to sell the property with two separate units, and we wouldn't let him do it.
Okay, got it. And, Mr. Chairman, frankly, that's where I'm at right now. It looks like a nice house, a nice plan, but I don't like two-family homes in our town. So can we discuss your stance on that?
Well, I would just like to state for the record, I've never heard that before, and I am not trying to request something that the board is not comfortable with. I didn't come here to... I just, for me, my thought process was, everything is split. I live on a very busy road. If the board is not comfortable with that, I understand that. But pretty much, that's what this shows. The modification would be put a door at the top of the second floor, top of the stairs, and there are entrances and exits for both residents. That's why I'm requesting.
By way of history, my first experience with this building, and I was actually in this building, it was the office of a lawyer by the name of Mark Weiner. And Mark Weiner was on the first floor, his office, and he lived on the second floor. He sold the property, and I think we went a little far in giving the second owner the opportunity to make a business on the first floor. Because there are no businesses along there, to best of my knowledge. There might be some real estate.
Century 21 is...
Real estate office.
And there's a few others.
That is a... Anyway. 32 years I've been in this board, we've never given a variance for two-family house, never.
Okay, understood.
All right. So what do we do? Well, let's continue with the testimony. He has the right to make an application.
Well, yeah, but that's what he's requesting.
Yeah, if he's requesting.
That is what I'm requesting, so if that's the feeling of the board, I understand that.
Yeah. I mean, it's a beautiful facility and a nice location. Yes.
Yes, you may. So we're gonna take a five-minute break if anybody needs to use a little facility.
We would like to request a adjournment of this matter to rethink the application.
Okay. When you wanna come back? Based on Nora letting you come back, we're just gonna let you come back. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the date.
She's lucky.
Let's try and make it in this year.
Well, I guess if the applicant's gonna be relooking at what he would like to do with the property, he might not even need any comeback, is that right?
I would like to carry it to a big cert at this point.
With all extensions?
June 22nd, with all extensions through the end of January.
And no further notice, members of the public, this is the only notice you'll get that this case is being carried to June 22nd? Do I have a motion to that effect?
Second Jasko.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion to adjourn?
No, Mr. Chairman, if we get a motion to go into executive session...
Okay, that's what I meant. I thought we had to adjourn the meeting. Motion to go into executive session.
And that is to discuss Danny Realty, it's pending litigation, and after this executive session, there'll be no other public business, so if everyone can clear the chambers.
Chairman, I think there were objectors that were confused about what's next.
Is that Mr. Saro down there? How you doing? Do you understand this meeting is being carried to June 22nd? Because he wants to more time to think about the application.
He's gonna modify his application.
Could modify his... Could withdraw. Best bet is to keep in touch with Nora. He may withdraw the application, please, we don't know. But this is the procedure. He has the right to carry the case.
It'll be approved.
Yes. I'm sorry, what happened?
Maybe he's just asking to...
Oh, oh, sorry.
He confirmed the date, that's correct. All right, once everyone leaves the chambers, I'll be able to go into the executive session.
Bye. Yes. It'll be posted.
Yeah, I know, right? Do you steal pays for women? No, I don't.
Yep, we got it.
Ma'am, if you could please leave the chambers, please.
I didn't bring my Danny Realty. I didn't know.